Store and do a liquor inventory counts, one of our tests is we found items on the floor and it's great. Inventory system of the store, we found two out of the ten hundred. Inventory system. Well, and then the last finding there is the real compliance finding, this typically says that the city does pay certain vendors and transactions to electronic home brands. And technically, there should be a formal policy around transactions. There was no formal policy. We'll find it for. Now moving on to some financial results here, we're going to start the general fund. So the yellow bar or the yellow line. The orange bar there is the unsigned fund balance of the general fund, the black line there is the general fund. So the city's fund balance policy is that they make a fund balance of fifty percent of the polling year budget. But it's got a golden point point three one is the the fund balance policy. Also at the year in twenty twenty one, we had a fifty two fifty seven point two percent fund balance in terms of the following years. A budget. Here we're just looking at budget, the actual in twenty twenty one on the on their on a budget. The middle even see actual results on the right years to vary with that one budget. Top line there being revenues, so in twenty twenty one, the city and general fund have a thirty five thousand dollar positive budget variance when it comes to revenue. This was mostly due to more grand revenue than expected, so specifically these are small cities to save in twenty twenty one. The expenditures were also fifty for also over budget, a hundred fifty thousand dollars over budget. Main reason for that being flood repairs that occurred in twenty twenty one. So all in all, this week's amount decreased about sixty thousand in the general fund and the final one balance is here is eight hundred twenty five thousand dollars. You're breaking down the general fund by different revenue types the last three years, so you'll see twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one on this graph. Different categories, taxes, license, permanent, your governmental revenue and other revenue sources. I'm signing the other revenue sources would be like rental revenue, returnings, items of that nature. So yeah, pretty, I mean, overall, pretty consistent breakdown of the taxes and your governmental revenue state, who made revenue sources for the general fund. Next slide here again, saying the general fund, but looking at the different department expenditures. Last three years of the general government, public safety, public works, culture and record, transferred to other funds, then some other things. For expenditure sources. So couple of things to play on here, just in twenty twenty one from twenty twenty, culture and record where flood repairs were allocated to the white deal and stuff there. And the past year is a little bit more, a couple of years. And this is a quick slide to play on the city's different special revenue funds, the city currently has seven special revenue funds open. And all in twenty twenty one, the fund balance, you know, seventy funds decreased about ninety thousand dollars. And now same format with this graphic, if you're looking at the capital project. The capital project fund this year had a lot of project related services and updated nothing like our projects in twenty twenty one. So that's why you see about a one point two million dollar decrease in the fund balance last year, just in a couple of projects. Then here the city making various debt service funds, so this graph just simply points out for this slide, we just put out all different funds. Then you also see the cash and assets available on the fund, then the outstanding debt as a twelve thirty one point one. Then when all those different bonds and capital leases mature, we can see it on the right there. Now this graph will show the debt service fund in the governmental fund for the next ten years, pretty consistent overall. And now here, we're just looking at a summary of all the enterprise funds. The water sewer, electric, storm and liquor fund, obviously, the top half of this slide shows the net position and how that changed from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. And then the bottom half shows the cash balance of each one and how that changed. So in both definition and cash, there was a decrease in twenty twenty one across all the enterprise. And now all of these slides, I won't put too much detail on these slides, but this shows the basically activity of each fund the last three years. Top half is the operating activity and the bottom half is the not operating activity. Something you'll notice is the capital contributions and transfers are pretty high in multiple funds because of all the enterprise. The project the last few years. You know, the overall revenue is pretty consistent year over year, and that's because there hasn't been, the rates haven't changed last few years as well. This is the school of funds now. Again, not much, not much to say here, but the capital contributions and transfer is pretty high because of, again, because of the hinder fund activity that came along with both capital projects. The next one's the electric fund, pretty consistent revenues you'll see year over year. Does it count the rates? Yeah, you can just move on to the stormwater fund. Again, pretty high capital contributions and transfers because of that activity that I mentioned before. Next slide is the liquor fund, top line there is the gross profits, so sales left positive result. You'll see a difference twenty twenty to COVID, so otherwise it's pretty typical there over here. And then here, just a quick lap graph showing the total cash and investments that the city has as of year in twenty twenty, year twenty twenty one. Most of your cash is held in your enterprise fund, you also have any contracted capital projects in both general funds. Overall decrease from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one is due to just wrapping up the project. And now here are some key performance indicators, here the black line is the city of Kenyan. And then the orange bar class four cities, sub cities of similar population of Kenyan. And the yellow bar is other cities in the county. So this is kind of how you compare to those here, so for instance, tax will rate. Your tax rate in the city is a little bit higher than the average of class four cities in county. But then for instance, your tax per capita is really a little bit below average on both of your groups. Next, we're looking at the long term debt per capita and then debt service expenditures as a percent of current expenditures. So current expenditures would be an example of basically all your expenses except for capital projects, any expenses. So here, the graph on the left here is it's come to long term debt for capital because of bonds issued for the red wing and this are projects. So you're above average there in debt per capita, but then your debt service as a percent of current expenditures, okay, you're right in line with those groups we have. And moving on here, on the left, we're going to see current expenses per capita and the rate capital expenses per capita for capital. So you'll see in like twenty nineteen and in expectation twenty twenty, a little bit of a jump on capital expenditures, that's one most of the costs. Where occurrence that went pretty volatile, they some went to have profits. And your current spending, a little bit above the average in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty because of cost related projects, the population debt and stuff like that. Otherwise, pretty, pretty in line. The last slide here is showing how well your enterprise funds, your water and sewer funds, how well the operating activity covers your debt service allocation in those funds. So for instance, at the end of twenty twenty one, the water fund's operating activity covers a hundred and ninety percent of debt service allocation. While the sewer fund, there's a hundred and twenty six percent of debt service allocation. Right, we're basically right in line with with the averages there of those. That's like a whole opening up for any questions or comments.
So Tyler, you know, the enterprise funds about showing kind of the overall funds about growing. So I was kind of wondering the stormwater fund did twenty one, I wonder if that showed, you know, we took a. We took a little bit out of there for the red wing project, and I wonder if that reflected that or if that was before that.
Well, it looks like, I think that looks more twenty one.
Okay.
Just our wonderful.
Okay. Yeah.
That represents the funding.
Okay, all right, that's still good though, either way. Yeah.
And you updated a few of the numbers, yeah, from when we met on Thursday. It looks like the liquor store position is reflected as better than what we saw on Thursday, right?
Yeah. Basically, attention my building on our allocation was a lot.
Yep, so.
For the final one, whoever the bracket operating.
So all of those designated funds then improve their position then.
Right, right.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Tyler, I'll be one thing too.
Yes.
Derek?
Yes. Yeah. Forest tree partner, just to summarize, the forest tree training project. The country instead of. Figuring in the first couple of questions to find. Finishing that up. They're out there, it's in progress. In twenty twenty two, steel coating, a project that's not as bad as that work has now gotten people asking me if made it out. What's up there? And they're all done, we were able to complete all of the project areas that we're sure we'd be able to get, we're not. They were able to complete all those with them, they're slightly lower than planned budget. Kind of related, no public, we're going to be working a busy time, extra asset payment and cost. Were able to get one. Pretty good price. So.
How much pressure is in this?
He was a listener. Always been talking. It's kind of like a level of repair. So last thing for sure. You know, parking downtown. He put mend on some of that. Looking after. Or the best one. Will be prepared.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll talk with you later.
Wherever you want, personally, parking is always good. That in itself.
Oh, like the painted one hundred percent. I know I've seen them, they're probably. Some of the older. I want to name them as a seller. And that's, that's one thing that. No. Uh, no, no. Which in most games.
What's the length of?
Right now it was. Twenty three.
There was a.
That wasn't. Any other question? Okay. Um, the next thing.
You talked about the parking.
Yeah.
Oh, you just. Okay. Oh, I got it loaded up. You know what, you know. Okay. Yep.
Okay. Um, we just kind of. One there, so. More. In the forest tree area. Forest tree. Um, so. Go off by the screen here, talk through this.
So why are we here talking about? Big thing. Big thing that we're trying to address people. If you remember, we talked about that in the years past, this is an issue in this chart. That's on the right hand side of the screen here, shows the city. These are the flows that are coming through and just around the top. This red line is what the system is designed for, three hundred fifty seven thousand gallons of water. So this is the past five years worth of data, the green line is the maximum made any month, the blue line is the average twelve minutes over. So what's something about here is these big spikes with the green line, that happens in any city during the spring. I don't like how tall they are, not how much, and how frequent they are, but the big problem that we're trying to address is the question of time. In blue line, we have some areas where there's multiple months of flow. This makes here in twenty nineteen, I think there was about six or seven months of flow, so the average flow was above what the previous time was designed. That's a problem, and that's time, we're trying to renovate the water drain. And he's made a point to point that out, and if you don't take significant steps to reduce that. That's really shows that we don't want to do that, so when we put together the infrastructure management plan that comes from one of the goals of that plan was to. It ends up to reduce this water coming into our system. Rainwater, groundwater, that shouldn't be getting into the system, but it is, because we have old pipes, old manhole ducts. So in twenty twenty three, the Pearl Green Forest tree area, that was added. That's what we're here talking. So what do we find along Forest Tree? Aside from a couple of things, nothing too surprising, older pipe pipe concrete and old structures. Five involved in nineteen forty. There's large sections of the of the main basis, it's more of a time stream area that is a snakeback through the woods. And below the creek, really hard, it's not impossible to get to both that, so basically, we can't maintain that. That's a problem, I really agree with anything. In addition to that, we're still live in progress, old and high, some cases, we saw active ionized, I'm sure your video exists a second. They're going to come into the pipe, and this one right here, kind of a big deal in terms of shaping this project. There's three water pipes here, here, and here, there's a type of the world. When we did a survey. These pipes here and here are extremely shallow, below, below. If we're looking at some improvement in the future, the heart is not going to want to. So that, that dictates what we can and cannot do with it. We'll talk more about that later, but generally speaking, it's likely to vary for conditions. I don't think this is a big surprise, but I would look at this a risk or major ionized. Without it, so improvements on. Next one. When we have a. So. This is inside of the pipe as one of the creep crops. This is, this is the most extreme data I've ever seen, where I've even heard of. These are the types of issues that we're trying to figure out. It's hard to estimate exactly how much water is coming out of that area of assuming at somewhere around ten to fifteen. Probably fairly close, that address, twenty one gallons of down today, the billion one thousand four hundred. What does that mean in terms of city volume all of that? Well, that equates to the type of time passing, higher life. So we're looking at, you know, capacity development, just that one. Looking at that eye eye right there, it's going to open up. Of capacity. Just to, you know, this one's a little bit. The wave numbers and this. That we operate tomorrow. But this is only black. There's more of this probably going on. What's the, what's the risk of that collapsing again? Very high, that's where we're. Scheduled on the. So the city, it isn't like a small leak that will just stay for one year, this is the risk. Yeah, a lot of times in the, in the, like, middle, a little bit of a grip or a little tiny bump. Coming up on the pipe, there's there's large pieces of pipe that look like they're roots, they could fall in. I don't know how long it's been there, I don't know where I'm going to stay. Yeah.
Very good, that really is a feature on the water. Why would we ask?
This time I heard it.
Okay. Our money because of. Okay, thank you.
So, recommendation for addressing this, initially, we were looking at the. Lining all the time, basically putting. Here at that end, I'm going to feel off the week, that's not going to work with our blood. So another thing to do is you can repress the line and basically. And the water is coming, our medium and the ion required. The ramp and contact line on that, on my software, well, which is detailed in the report. Apparently, how I thought, and there is a lot of. Difficult to access areas, and I'm concerned about the amount of back, it would represent a big issue as well, so. High risk, high cost, not recommended or. So what we're looking at is recommendations. Or that, that is rerouting this sewer that kind of goes all the way along. What we would do, we'd start down here on the cell phone, two segments of main that are okay down here. Patient of them, you reroute this sewer. To get deeper below this three thousand, it's a gravity pipe, putting a new lip. Pumping the wastewater here, and we could direct that over to the margins where that will. Second street monitor. So I'll go through the comps here, think a little while, but with this option, we'd be disconnecting indoor advantage. By half mile of unused pipe, I look at that. To back up, I have a problem. So one of the challenges with this, they're looking at figuring out how to some. Station that's something that public work needs to get to every day, not more. There'd be a power expansion associated with that, there's one service line that looks like we'd have to do that. And you're just meant from the sit down in order to make this new route work. And then included with the price that, you know, go over in a little while, there's some optional sewer lining that looks like it's justified, just a matter of one. So forestry, what do we find, similar construction, clay pies, brick structures, looks like it was installed prior to nineteen fourteen. Several different repairs that are. Roofs in the line was a major issue when you're televising, a really long time to televise and clean out that part, because there were so many roofs that were. So any, and there's roofs coming in that's deteriorating the pipe joints, basically making the holes for infiltration. All the time. There's a couple of waterlogged areas where there's some fail pipe or structural issues. I think that's coming out, but general description, monitoring or with book wise areas that need to be addressed. And sometimes a moderate risk for high act, gets them to Pearl Green just because it's not down in the big autumn, it's much more a high watered life. But still a problem, something I should be having. So here are just a couple of pictures of what we found with the televise, the brick walls. Pretty obvious in there, but that caused logs and pipe. Almost every single door, all of ours. And then there is a couple of different locations where there's holes opening up on the pipe for just like small fragments. So that would be. A little bit sooner maybe than.
So with these clean pipes, if they didn't have, like, the trade routes and being under the creek, let's say they're just. Nice. Flat area of all the, would they last, could we expect to get a hundred years out of them, or is this, they're at about seven five years, are we just getting the lifespan of these?
Yeah, this is the thing, the major issue with, with springtime that is necessary. The joint opened up, um, there's a number of. Your hospital joint. So, um, at least every project where I come along, uh, in practice. Get some line, something. Some of the new issues that can come up with those types of. Allow. There are systems out there where they might. Um, I have Matt.
So besides the reasonable segments here, how much more do we have to take care of?
Most of the system.
And most of this happens, this is just going to be a.
And this is one place I will look at bringing out. Um, one recommendation. Yeah. Uh, certain place. This is one of the things that we do with these play types. Feel that people can help to keep it out without having to dig out. So I see this. Because realistically, there's not the amount of. But this can be done. We can solve a lot of problems. All of them, but it will, it'll, uh, solve a potential portion of them. So, um, did we look at restructing? Um, so with the pipe lining, uh, digging up and doing time preparedness, we look to have. Uh, lining the inside, need the service connection, it can change to go nine hundred pounds. Thought for a while. Disconnecting pipe and first construction. So probably take care of that. Um, and then, uh, there's some product out there to buy and remove it. It's, it looks like a maverick, it looks like a maverick going inside around the. And then, uh, uh, once they get on the inside, they inflate it to the inside of the pipe. And cure it of pot water, steam, right? It looks like this. But the city did this on that. So the exact same type of. So, uh, project. Um, uh, minimal amount to be looking at for addressing the Pearl Creek line. About one point four ninety dollars for rerouting the main. Um, doing that minimal amount of pipe to redirect us. There's, uh, I thought about that. Optional lining, wanted to add that through without bringing the tour more to about one point six. And then broken forestry did do a couple segments, uh, but well, five hundred. So, uh, the decision points coming here, what was budgeted in twenty one capital improvement. Was that one 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 point two? Adjustment replacement. Uh, so the, the city's coming up here, we'll be reviewing. How much do you want to budget for this project in particular? And that amount is fixed. How much? Um, yeah, any other comments or very information? That's what we're looking for here today. Um, but hopefully that dollar.
Is there any way to gauge how much money we're spending here after here treating all that additional water? That, I mean, is there, is there a number you can draw on that?
Yeah. How much? I, I.
Okay.
It's, it's really there.
Well, but you, you, like, you, is there any way to just do like a ball, like, is it? Like, is it closer to, does it cost us an additional ten thousand dollars a year to do this? Is it, uh, like, is there any way to give even an idea as to what?
I compare numbers.
Can you tell me it isn't significant?
It's it's tricky because if you're just wanting to get recent costs alone, the cost is actually is relatively low. The problem are when we go for the next term from. And if, although you play a lot.
Right. Sure.
Um, and, you know, there's others that are difficult to imagine. Uh, when there's too much water running. Nobody likes that, but putting the value on that. It's considerable, but it's difficult.
But the, the biggest expense then is if you have a treatment plan that is permitted to operate at this level. And we're at this level. Uh, M V C A is going to come back and say, no, you need to operate at this level. That's, that's where the big cost.
Just about done here. So if there's anyone moving forward, uh, with this. We selected the project here this fall. Designed over this, over this company here. It were made out and starting over the time in that. Um, the lining component of it. Um, these didn't, uh, necessarily. We're looking at a lift station, there's certain components. So we keep realistic. Um, we, the goal had time, but basically. Get it out. There's some, uh, the distance. There's no formal reason that recorded it. Um, that would give the, the ones that hire them. Um, that human acquisition process at the time, and that can also impact. The schedule for that, if you want things to initiate the process, the asking for, uh, approval to start that negotiation. Have some of the platform and.
Can you go back a slide?
Mm-hmm.
So you, so there's going to be one point one or one point two million that will be generated next year through the budget.
These are just projects that are identified. Yeah, really. Don't know what's coming. No budget. Something that. Yeah, let you know what's coming. That's just what we're identifying.
So if this, if these two projects were bid together, but say forest was a, what do you call it? A addendum or a?
Oh.
That's the word I'm looking. Alternate. That way, if the numbers came in low, then we might be, you know, if we're talking one point two to one point four, maybe we can keep moving ahead with that. But if the numbers come way high, then forest could be, um, done maybe the next year or whatever. But that way it gives us flex, gives the city flexibility. And we don't just automatically say, well, we're going to put one off. Because there, it is still, the two ranges are close, depending on how the bids come in. If the bids come in high, we don't do, have to do the alternate. Then we could just have them do, you could just have them do Pearl Creek. Cause that's really the, I think, the more important thing right now. So the, and we'll talk about this more during the work session, but that's kind of how I was looking at this. You know, that way we can, maybe we could still stay on track with the capital improvement plan. And keep the two together depending on if the numbers come in right. And if they don't, then just do part, you know, do the Pearl Creek part.
Another meeting.
For success.
Yeah. Well, to me, I mean, it comes down to this compliance, it's not going to improve on its own. And even if it's not that much, the process, the water, the big problem is going to be when we have our next permitting. And they start, you know, they're going to be able to build water levels and say you've got a facility that just isn't capable of this. So we're either going to spend one to two million dollars in the past, or we're going to, uh, spend more, uh, upgrade the, uh, sewer facility and still have a problem with water leaking in the whole place. So I don't, I don't think we have much of a choice here. I, I think, yeah, I think you're. You did a good job of boxing this.
All the one thing that was. You always come. Uh, you know, you consider budget price and what's going to go. And you, the whole, the way you're in the context. What I'm, you know. Before we would, uh, maybe you may run. Put some material together that. Um, probably just. Change based on that. Yeah, I understand. So we need. I think.
Yeah.
When are you looking at, uh, this three in, uh, August or September or you want before next?
Um, so one thing to keep in mind, we also have to set a budget work session, which has to either be at the end of this month or we're thinking maybe the beginning of September. Um, so where's? Right here, okay. So, anyway. So you've got the week of the twenty ninth. The week of the fifth, I was maybe looking at that more for, uh, like budget work session. Um, but I guess the twenty ninth is fairly open, at least for me, as far as night meetings go or. Terrick, I don't know who you're.
Yep. Yeah. That's Monday, May? Uh, Monday or Tuesday would be good. The open house of schools.
Yeah, we have a planning commission meeting on the twenty ninth. At six. Um, the thirtieth, we don't have. So, yeah. Or the first is open too, I guess. Yeah.
Was everybody?
The twenty ninth is when we have planning commission. So I was thinking Tuesday, the thirtieth. Or uh, the first, which is a Thursday, Dan's got open. Do you have open house on the thirty first? Yeah, so. Yeah, we're open, so. Yeah, because I don't know if like, like with Mary, if that's an issue with the store, five o'clock or not, or she can get, usually she's got, I mean, she's got another person she can, depending on their schedule, I guess, but.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure.
Monday at five?
Well, we'll have to be on base. Okay, so thirtieth, we don't have any meetings at night. No, we're going to do the budget workshop maybe the next week. Infrastructure, I think. Yep. And, yeah. Just infrastructure.
Okay. August. All of them have been saying. I, I, both. Okay, we're done. Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Um, yeah, so the one thing. There's like. Um, so I guess the, the big question then become, you know, how do we go about moving in on cleaning that up? Um, there is kind of two schools of thought. One of them is we just go in and clean it up based on the findings. The other one is we get. The court order is going to be more of a solid thing, you know, to go in there. Um, with the smaller vehicles, I'm not as concerned about moving on. The vehicles and the boats and stuff like that. The bigger concern is going to be those semis and where are we going to put them and all that kind of stuff. But I guess I'll have to talk to the chief about it. Kind of see, um, you know, Scott said we could, the city could start moving some smaller stuff. And maybe. And maybe then we'll get some movement on the rest of it. Start with that. He's more, I think, leaning toward. Going to court or trying to get a, I mean, address order, address order, whatever it's called. Especially for the heavier equipment. So. I guess that's one kind of thing I wanted to talk about from a direction is. You know, what does the council think? Cause now rubber's gonna hit the road here pretty quick, so. It's like. So the plan can be just to start moving the smaller stuff and impound it. I can make one more attempt to reach him. I can also, I'm gonna try to call the guy that talked to me about the semis one more time and say, time's up, you know. But, anyway, so that's kind of where, where it's at. So. Right. They've been moving stuff around, but nothing's. Did L N M move them? Or L and D? Well, we can, yeah, we can probably find someplace to home. It's just a matter of we're gonna find a place to put the stuff to begin with. Um, we can't scrap out or do anything with it. You know, we have to hold it for a certain period of time. So that's one thing we gotta do is figure out a place to put that stuff and I think we probably can. But these are just some logistical things we're gonna have to start looking at. Well. It, that's the other thing is it's gonna cost quite a, I mean, you know, the towing and all that stuff. No. What we do then is we would just assess that back to that property though. You know, any of that stuff. Um, you know, so they're responsible ultimately for those costs. But upfront, yeah, it's gonna be, you know, towing those semis and then the cars aren't as big of a deal and there's a boat. Then there's weeds and stuff that can be cut down. I would try to find a contractor to come and do that or some, somebody to do that besides these guys. Um, so there'd be costs there, but that can all be assessed back to the property. As part of the enforcement action. So. That's probably not really a, yeah, not an issue for the city, but we have to front the. But then we can assess it. And we, we won't get it back till the earliest next year unless he pays that. You know, unless the owner pays it. But that's what he's gonna be looking at if he doesn't, you know, and we've got no contact from him, so. He's been served twice with, you know, two different times here and he's never responded. I've just had that one guy call me that I think owns those semis. So he's more worried about. So maybe that will take care of itself when I call him and say, you're out of time and, you know, we're gonna start towing him. Maybe he'll get him out of there, but the other stuff I, I don't know. I mean, if anybody's gonna come and get us, past. I don't know, we haven't talked about it, so I don't know, we don't. We have to keep him for a certain period of time before we get him. No, but. Yeah. And that's gonna go eventually. No, I mean, we're gonna scrap. Well, then we'll just pay him for it. That's what that animal's doing. Yeah. I mean, if we're gonna move this stuff up. Scott Riggs. Okay, he thinks the small stuff were, he's okay with us moving that. He thinks we should start with the smaller stuff, the boat and the cars. And then wait a little time, but he thinks that we should maybe go to court for the heavier of the semis. Get an order to go on the property to take them. So. He, I know it's kind of like, you know, he said, I guess, you know, we basically, we can go either way with it. I guess, you know, he feels we've got enough leverage with the order the council made. To move everything, but he's more comfortable getting a court order. So that's what he told me.
Is Jeff unable to get any more of the vehicles out of there?
Well, one of them moved, two of them moved, one of them came back. There may just be one that was moved out of there. Yeah, but one left and then came back again. And I'm like, okay. That's not what I call cooperation. Anyway, so, yeah, we could go to court and we could just get an order for the whole works. The whole property moved up too. So that's what we've done in the past. This is a bigger mass, bigger property. When we've torn houses down, we go to court. You know, so it is a bigger deal. It's not just words. You know, I mean, that's, that's, that's a given. Yeah, four eleven ballast was a negotiated sale that we tore it down. But, uh, that old house that was up on Trunion, kind of in the woods. That one, we, we went to court and got an order to tear it down, approval to tear it down over there. Yeah, I know it's an eyesore. And like I say, I'll reach out again to that kind of tell them every time. See if Phil, he said he was gonna have a move by August. That hasn't happened, but it's not over. Months ago either. Anyway. Okay. And so I can work with Scott on that and just start that process. Um. Yeah, I suppose if you want to, if you wanna, yeah, give us some direction on. The next step to be taken, yeah, we'll put that in the minutes. But it's not just something like I want to do it. Scott. No. Okay, so you have, um, you should have in Granicus then a copy of the red line. Um, agreement. But he just got us the red line version. So I can get the copy of that, so my recommendation for the council is move it with. The changes. And then if you guys wanna go back and forth, as long as there's not much. We can, you know, we could if we need to, but then move ahead with it. So then I wanna. So I'm gonna go grab your. So I don't know if there's any questions on that. No, I'm, I'm saying that you should go ahead and approve it. I'm recommending you go ahead and approve it. Um, based on the city attorney's revisions. And that way, you know, as long as they go along with it. Yeah, and they don't have to come back here. Cause we're trying to expedite it a little bit, if they are asking. Well, if it's material. City attorney, yeah.
So the other things you probably couldn't do would be like maybe a meat rattle or something or. We, he was grabbing a foot in his stomach. But as right now, we're. Like a rattle we had. That he paid that. Can't wait, number one, that would be the model. But we've been having. That's important about. Well, it wasn't to like once, like a month, that you were ordered to move it over. And it's not being well, being on the land. But all the men, the insurance people will see the whole. You know, we'd have to carry. So you're talking. About twice a month? Yeah. So it's really hard, I don't know. Yeah, that one, I don't.
No.
Even once a month. You know that. Um, we can. Two hour. We run. I'm gonna be a, we're gonna make some. You know, it's gonna be now. Once a month. Maybe our rooms, it may work. I'm hoping that. Yeah. The key thing was the same. I will move a resolution twenty twenty two dash fourteen. Proving the application for lawful gambling of retaining fire.
I'll second that.
Yeah. So. Right now, the four. The twenty two four SUV. Is, um, that Peter Ford. Uh, I don't know, it's like. We're sort of stuck. So basically. There has been. Some concern with. Some people there about whether we should fix it. And there's been other people there said, you know, they'll fix it. The, the bottom line is that the cost of repairs right now is at sixty two percent of the value of. SUV. Which is not enough to total it. It's gotta be at seven. So in some ways, we really don't have much to talk about. We, we asked. The league insurance if they would total it or give us an answer as an option. Said they, they couldn't do it. She was gonna, our adjuster was gonna check with somebody else there and see, you know. I'm not real confident on that, so. If, okay, so if it's repaired, then the problem is, um. Or maybe it is, maybe we just don't know, but they've kind of looked into some of the parts. And they think there's, like, they may not be able to get them or they don't show up as available, like from back order. Now, I did talk to another body shop. Um, I think Jeff talked to somebody on the road just because of. The way this has been going and the. Person I talked to, the fairbo body shop person, said they wouldn't do it because it's already been taken apart and. Um, he couldn't, he said, I can't tell you the parts available if I actually order them. So that was a question I had. Now, I know they haven't ordered them yet. But they're saying they can't get some of them. And then the other thing is, we're still waiting to hear. We're still waiting to hear back from Jeff. You know, from the body shop and the road he was talking to. So. I don't know, it's just kind of a headache to me. I wanted to see the thing get fixed. We wanna see the thing get fixed. Or if we could total it and get the value of it. You know, we have a line on another one late fall that we could get. Now, the insurance company, the league insurance. Said they would, they could give us the value of. Um, the repairs. It's the value of their person's. They're twenty three. And the value of that thing is thirty six, thirty seven. But there's also scrap um, value. Salvage value. Salvage value, the quote they got was thirty five hundred. So that puts us at. Um, about what, twenty seven thousand? So Jeff and I, I've talked to Jeff about this. We still figure we're seven or eight short, even if, if we go that route, we have to come up with eight thousand more. I'm not real excited about doing. So it's kind of like, this is why we've kind of been in a holding pattern to see if. Any other way we can get it fixed. I don't think getting it totaling it now is gonna really be an option, doesn't seem like it. If they call me tomorrow and say it can be, that'd be a whole different story, but. Um, so. Yeah, anyway, I wanted to provide, just give you guys. Wish I had more answers, but. I don't. So. Anyway. You know, if we, if we knew we could get more for salvage for that. Like nine thousand, for example, because it's not total. Somebody could buy it, a body shop could buy that thing. And fix it up, and it wouldn't be a salvage title. But it does need a lot of work. It's not a, you know, easy thing for somebody to fix. There's also engine work, cementing work that has to be done to it. Uh, so. But we would have to look, go out and try to sell it. And we don't know what we would get, you know, I can't really. Speak to that market. No idea, you know. But if there was one. Body shop that said, you know. We'd like, you know, we'd maybe give you even eight or nine thousand. Then I would think. Well, maybe we should just sell it to them. Take our money and run. But I don't know. So. That's all I can say. Well, that was the body shop in Faribault. Yeah, he. And he wouldn't do it because it's already been torn apart, so he said he wouldn't do it. Yeah, he said it would be November. Yep. But he would order the parts before that. Well, we have the, the twenty. Twenty two F one fifty supposed to be here in September. So we know that's coming up behind, coming up here, so that's one. You know, positive note here. And once that comes, that'll take, that will take pressure off the other two vehicles. So we do have that coming. According to Ford, it's on the production line in September, and we just don't know when it's gonna be done, so. Yeah, but they said normally what's on the production line, it's three weeks. But I heard that was three weeks. So I don't know, but three, four weeks, whatever. Well, that's the whole thing too is. Are we gonna run into problems with electronics, computers? I know, you know. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just. Don't like the idea of not knowing how soon the parts are gonna get here, and then how long it's gonna take them to. Next second, is it gonna be, yeah, it's gonna follow the, it's gonna be safe for the officer.
Eight months?
Eight.
Well, if it's gonna be that long, I. I don't know. I mean, I can't say. Three months, maybe. But I, I don't know, it's, you know. It's hard, it's hard to say. Yeah, Wayne's a former body person, so. Mm hmm.
And that's. So there's. If there's. Yeah, you're. Self-obsessive. I understand. You don't.
Yeah.
You don't know what's left. So. I just. Getting comfortable. Really, but if you just. So. But. First of all, it's true that you want. It's. Even though. Actually, if you're.
Yeah.
Place, they just. Down behind their foot. But.
Well, it's got the accent, yeah.
People prepared to. Stand. Um, and. Push map again. It shouldn't be. I mean, somebody. So entitled. That stuff. The people by. So what it fifteen. Or. But they. What I got. So. But. If you have a demonstration. Using blue parts. Sounds like. Blue parts. So. I was thinking that. The guy.
Well, I think that makes, it would make sense that, that. The, to turn it. Down and see if we can get from that. Sixty two, sixty three percent up to seventy, if we find, oh, wow, we got a cracked head in here or something, you know, that we didn't see before. Uh, then figure out how far out are we with the parts? That'll help us make a better decision. Yeah, we're a year out. You know. That it.
Yeah.
Runner. So I, I just think.
Yep.
So. It's hard to just. Throw in a. New vehicle, it just, you know, like say, well, let's give up on this new vehicle and another new one.
Yeah.
But.
You hate to see that.
So. Yeah, yeah, I think that's the issue. We need, we need to find out.
Okay. Nope. Fortunately. Yeah, so only about the week of. Uh, September. Two, three, September fifth. Is Labor Day, so. Six, seven, eight. Three, seven, eight.
Well, mine.
Yeah, so. Okay. 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 Yeah, so.
Who's the main?
Yep, yep.
I'm.
Wednesday the seventh. Wednesday the seventh. Yeah, like you. Do five o'clock again. Yeah, it's a good time for. Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to. Also works. On Wednesday. September seventh.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion made second. Also. The seventh, which is Wednesday at five P M. Those in favor of the motion say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Item D discussion. People. Don't.
So the. General, I guess, information at this point. The. Just the whole. The future of people park. Um. You know, Depot Park is kind of a. You know, needs some upgrades to it um, at some point in the near. Next few years, whatever, I mean, it's not gonna collapse, but it, it could use some upgrades. Um, and so the concept, we talked about that versus a new. Type of structure. In Depot Park. No numbers yet. We don't have any. Cost or any, how are we gonna pay? We haven't talked about any of that yet, but. Just. It's sort of a long term thing, and I, I put in your packet some pictures of different park shelters. And these are what the park, similar to what the park board talked about, they had pictures of these same ones. Um. Just from one catalog, so I mean. Just to get some idea of what were. What could be, and what we've talked about. Uh, is I think a. Facility that's got. Covered picnic area tables, and then it's got a enclosed, a building behind it. Which can be used like with a little kitchen area, you know, there could be storage behind that. Um, kind of multi-use kind of thing. So anyway. And we know that the Depot Park is a historic building. It's not like on the national historic register, but it's a historic building for Kenya. So. I think most people agree that. If it isn't gonna be used for a shelter anymore, find another use for it, or another person that's willing to preserve it, move it, or whatever. I don't think anybody's. You know, talking about turns, turn it down or anything like that, it's just. Reuse of it. We move it. But anyway, so that's. I just wanted to have the council, bring the council into that discussion, make you aware that we're talking about it. It's definitely a long range kind of deal. It's not something that's gonna happen next year probably, but. You know. Maybe more specific plans will happen next year, but. Anyway, so I don't know, is there any questions I think, or?
I guess. Is that that money that came through there and you could use it for? I, I thought that something like this, in fact, you might wanna talk to Gray guys and send it to the county.
Okay.
They're doing a huge.
Like a new one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the middle. It's, it's pretty remarkable.
And they got D N R. Okay. Okay.
But yeah, they're gonna have, they're running water.
Okay.
Restrooms and. Yeah, so it's good.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be, it'd be a way to move on. And that. For previous history, there's completely. But it was just kind of a general idea. As I mean, it's still wrapped up. But we then. You give a last. This. Um. This thing at the head of these stories is. Similar people shelters. All the end of the rest. They called me about fifteen bars. Far as the people. The real truth is. Done a little bit, you know, not. And I was just, it's in general. So I just. Not something. In the future.
No, I think, I think I called it great.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Other. We did. I thought it was. Removing. We can't. Where it's. The locations and people. They can get pretty things and. Through the road. So. It's all. Okay. One more word, man. Item C. That's possible change to the city. Why are.
Well, this, this doesn't. Bother me. Too bad. Um. Especially with this one. Yeah, you know.
It was a parade for two days.
And we burned. Doctor, we got. The bird bombed off. It's really. Um. If the wind was. At the end of time. Word. But. If you just. I just, I didn't want to. Unnormally or just.
I thought about this when I, when I read. The summary on it and. I, I, I definitely. I, I, I definitely sympathize with you and what you're saying. Just don't know how you police it. Um, and I think, I think it's, you, you could drive yourself crazy trying to police it because. So I thought, okay, if, are we gonna station someone up there to watch? Well, then I'm, you know, I live out of town and I'm gonna go up on Sunday when nobody, nobody up there. Uh, or if you guys are watching, well, then I'll get my buddy who lives in town. He'll drive out and get it, and then we'll drive back into town, or there's so many different entryways in the town. Um, I think it's just something, oh, hopefully, they, they stop off and. Yeah, buy some food and shop at our, at the stores and get a little bit back that way, but. I, I just don't know how you can police it without people finding a way around it. Even, even if we gave everyone a sticker and said, you know, you have a city sticker. Well, if I live two miles out of town, I, I've got some friend in town who's got a sticker and a truck. Have them come out and get it, and we'll just come in that way. Or I thought, what if, what if, um, I had, if I don't have a, a truck and a trailer? And I have my buddy from out of town coming with his truck and trailer? And we load up a bunch of stuff and I say, you run to the, run and drop it off while I collect more stuff? Well, wait a second, you know, if I'm helping Rudy, I don't see it, so I, I just think we can end up driving ourselves crazy. Trying to, uh, you know, enforce a policy here where there's just so many ways to get around. Um, but I, I, I totally understand your frustration and I, I, I just couldn't believe. You know, the amount of traffic that went by, it was just non-stop on Saturday and Sunday and even in Monday. And I finally went up on Tuesday. Saw the mountain, uh, it, it's, it's, it's incredible, but I just don't know how you enforce it.
Right. No. No.
I just don't. Okay. Something's wrong with things.
Yep.
Yeah, it almost reminds me of the days when they needed hard to recycle electronics. Then you drive down the road and you see a TV on this side of the road, old V C R and that side of the street. There's always gonna be a way that people find around it. Yeah, and I don't. Yeah, if you want, it'd be one thing if they had, uh, you know, like L and D where you actually. Like way that someone captured your license plate or just not. And I just. So my, my only hope is that they, while we're in Kenya anyway, we might as well pick up some groceries and fill up gas. Spend some money, help, you know, help the town that way. I don't know. Drop their kids off at twenty minutes or something. That's my thought. I just don't know how you police it.
Yeah, I think that's a one.
But you brought it up, so that's a good thing.
No, I, I totally, I totally sympathize with you. I just don't. Yep. Right. Yeah, probably the best thing, like you say, is its location. The winds are predominantly out of the south and west, so usually they close that one. I haven't noticed it at all. Uh, in, in a couple of years. You know, keep my windows open a lot, so, yeah, but it's probably gonna. How long is it gonna take to get through that? It's gonna take. Well, at least we got a lot of room back.
Okay. Item B. Which is, uh, purchase of a twenty sixteen Peterbell cloud dump truck. Where the cloud comes.
That was me. Dump truck. Not a plod truck, yeah.
Okay. Oh.
According to.
Yeah, approve the purchase. I need a motion. Um, yeah, it's a hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. Twenty sixteen. We need a motion to approve the purchase, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, to approve the lease.
So, it is a more. But there is not really. Both come from. The other one really is going with either environment or product. You check a couple of different. And it's kind of terrible. None of the sound of the living. So we definitely want that. This price already been. Um, here in the.
Are you treating something, Anna, or any?
We, but, uh, we just.
Okay.
On Saturday.
Yeah.
And we're doing it for fifty-five.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it was a nineteen ninety. It's important. Or if we did. Super honey.
Nineteen ninety? Uh. I think you got your.
Yeah, we did. So you, can't, can you do any?
This is, this is not, not anything.
Okay.
It's no one winner.
The truck is all. That's the, that's the. Hopefully you're leaving. Didn't say what. I don't know, maybe the most, you know, maybe the. We don't know the back home.
You drove it from Louisiana?
What's that?
You drove it from Louisiana?
No, it was in Barmenton. It was just Barmenton, but, uh, um. Uh, I felt very comfortable with, with the truck when we were, we were ready to be four, we, you know, operated it a little bit. And, uh, I was home, uh, I remember back there, and it landed, uh, the last course. I think it was a good purchase that, uh, literally doesn't have any rust or anything. It should be, uh, something that will last here. So I'm gonna make most of the proof of the purchase. You see the second picture, guys?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion about it? Okay, most of them made in second to through the purchase of a twenty sixteen Peterbell film. So all of those that they were. Okay. Definitely off. Okay, now we go on to pay for it. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, through lease finance. And Mark, her lady, you have.
Oh, yeah, so. Of the terms of the lease. Um. The, the first payment would be January of twenty-three. Um. And. Let's see here. My. Oh, yeah. Sorry, there we go. So, um, the resolution to approve the lease finance. And, um, the St. Pica Canyon. Um, so the proposed lease term is years, interest rate is three points. Half a percent better than they thought. Is it just for topics? On the annual payment is twenty-eight thousand. Um, further information, so anyway, that's the terms of first. Payment would be the first of January of twenty twenty-three. Well, you could still join us.
If, if this. If this truck, uh, lasts as long as. I'll move approval of, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash. Uh, the lease with, uh, kinetic lease.
I'll second that.
Marshall been. Twenty sixteen Peterbell dump truck. And more discussion about. Although it's better than most.
Oh, we won.
But.
Oh, we won?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
Okay. That's it.
Yeah. That's it, yeah.
Okay. So under this. Definitely. I see the town committing on the regular tax, September the thirteenth at seven P M. And we'll be as well through, uh. Uh, the work sessions. Will be August the thirtieth, which is Tuesday at five P M. And also the other. Come, address, what do you want is Wednesday, September the seventh at five.
Correct.
Okay. So as long as we're comfortable in that, you have no comment. I think that I would. And. Kind of.
Okay.
Well, I mean. Well, I had that. Okay, you know. So then I kind of got. I got kind of lost in that thing. So, sorry to that family. Sorry that I was late.
Yeah, um, Rose Fest this weekend. Thanks in advance to all the staff that goes out of their way to make sure it's successful, always is.
I'm looking forward to Rose Fest as well. Everybody get out in the farmer's market. Garth's home, so. Good weekend.
And why you in the corner? My. Kathy. Joe. And okay. Wow. We need, uh, most. We got.
Yeah, I, I get how like most.
And I, I'm second. The exception. If not, as long as they made it second. They're, uh, they're gonna come. All the favor.